Call me to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Sioux Nebraska governing body, the city of Sioux to advise the Nebraska Open Meetings Act to conduct business. It copies the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda and are asked to complete and hand in a speaker card to the clerk. President shall approach the podium, stipulate him an address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall be governed by them, any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Sioux reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rule.
Taylor?
Here.
Coltrum, Preza, Dyson?
Here.
Tanya?
Here.
Singleton?
There.
Worgen?
Here.
Francis Cotto?
Here.
We have a forum present.
Alright, thank you. Uh, the first three items is you need to make a de-consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, to register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cotto, Taylor, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Dyson, Worgen.
Item number one under administrative items is consideration of Sioux County E nine one one interlocal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Welcome.
Hello. Mariah Scammyhorn, Sioux County nine one one, and over at the Justice Center.
We do have in the packet, we're good.
Okay, so, um, we have, uh, Sioux County did an increase for wages this year, they did a review, um, a salary review and realized that, um, county employees were lacking, um, in, uh, wage increase, and so this year they're, they're giving a pretty significant bump for everyone countywide. So, um, that line item in our budget has increased to reflect that, so, um, for dispatcher salaries and, um, my salary together is six hundred and five thousand altogether. Um, and that was the correction that needed to be sent out today, Greg helped me figure out an error on my part and got that all figured out. Um, otherwise, everything pretty much else stays the same as it did last year. Um, I tried to keep costs down as much as possible. The only thing that, um, you'll see, which will be on the second page, uh, be the communications equipment rental. Uh, rental fees have just, they've gone up for, um, mostly for the in-rent, which is, um, kind of an insurance on equipment, and that has gone up. And so the, the increase is just to reflect that, um, increase in those costs. So, otherwise, everything mostly stays, stays the same. So, I guess, any questions or concerns that you guys have?
I know we have been, um, in the past, uh, when it comes to dispatcher salaries in particular, wanting to make sure that we were competitive, um, with our surrounding area. I think we had lost maybe some dispatchers in the past for, for that reason, and so, um, I'm glad to see that we are trying to, to remain competitive just in the general job market, but specifically in, in, uh, positions with specific skill sets that are marketable and easily transferable to, to other places. So, I appreciate you, uh, looking into that and, uh, any questions from the council?
So, the next thing.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna be like linking and looking towards AI?
It's already here.
It's already here, okay.
That, uh, comms coach that I shared with the E nine one one board, that is AI.
It is AI, okay.
Yep, that is AI, and, um, some of our mapping software has also got some AI components that have not quite been integrated yet. We're still working statewide to get stuff going, but it's already here.
I had that.
So, just for educational purposes, as a reminder, uh, the E nine one one board is an interlocal between the city of Sioux, Sioux County and the city of Milford. Uh, and then we also have representation from other rural fire as well. Uh, that board has already reviewed and approved this budget, and then it goes out to those individual entities for a recommendation of approval, and then it goes back ultimately to the county as it is a county function, uh, and they implement that. And so, and I noted, uh, today when we were talking, some of the dysfunction we had in previous years where the city was recommending increases in salaries for dispatchers to remain competitive, and we were getting overruled by the county, and that seems to have resolved itself a number of years ago. So, uh, good to see this, and, um, I've always appreciated working on the, uh, E nine one process and everything we got going on there, so.
How many dispatchers do you have?
I currently have nine, um, I just had one that recently left, um, within the last couple of weeks. Um, so her position will be posted here towards the end of June because I'd like to get them into this next fiscal year as far as wages go. Um, but yeah, so we're, we're nine short one, but we're really reducing our overtime now because we have enough staff to cover most of the hours, which is wonderful.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Um, I would just say that it's been great to work with you, and you have a good team up there, and we really appreciate what you do. What you were very creative about finding funds to pay for things that need to be paid for when they need to be paid for, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments or any kind of motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Your motion in a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, to register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cotto, Taylor, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Dyson, Worgen.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Item two, consideration of a request from Centennial Market Cooperative, uh, Nebraska license number one two five three one one for the approval of his special. Designated liquor license application for an event at Harvest Hall on July eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Greg?
Uh, as noted with our SDLs, uh, if we have a new vendor that has not received one in a new location, we approve those and then subsequently thereafter, without any issues. Those don't even come through you, they just follow an administrative process. I think this is the first one in the city of Sioux that Centennial Market Cooperative has done, they have their own liquor license, um, I believe, but they're doing an SDL here for an event, so, uh, no concerns on this one, but this is our formal process for undertaking this.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, to register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cotto, Taylor, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Dyson, Worgen, seven zero.
Alright, thank you. Item three, consideration of an offer received to purchase land within the commercial rail campus development area legally described as lots sixteen and seventeen. Sioux Rail Campus P U D, second edition, located on the southeast one quarter of section twenty nine, township eleven, north, range three east of the six PM, Sioux County, Nebraska, um, Greg?
Yes, uh, this is kind of a big moment for us, this is the kickoff of, not the biggest secret in town, but, uh, something that, uh, a lot of us have been working on, and obviously the council's been a part of every step of the way uh, in regards to dairy processing LLC and getting this project kicked off. Uh, we did approve, uh, a temporary land lease a few months back to kind of get things ready for this moment. Uh, but now we've gotten down to brass tacks and we're finalizing the purchase agreement for two lots in the rail campus to dairy processing LLC. Uh, this is for a dairy processing facility that we have the applicants here that can tell you more about some of the elements and stuff. But, uh, this is kind of the beginning of the whirlwind on this project that we've been working very hard, especially Jonathan and myself for many months and lots of the staff as well. Um, the facility will go in lots sixteen and seventeen, these are kind of the western edges, uh, used to be a lot E of the rail campus. That area, uh, will predominantly cover basically a majority of the remaining portions of the rail campus for dairy processing facility in the main north lot, and then the southern lot on the south side of Worthman Boulevard will be for stormwater detention, uh, and adjacent to our current stormwater detention that we'll be building with the Worthman Boulevard project. I won't speak for the mayor, uh, but I can say, uh, on behalf of the city and the administration and my team, we're very excited to kind of get this going now. Uh, lots of teams meeting, Adam's here, and we've had a lot of meetings with Adam over the last couple of years now, actually. I think this one originally kicked off in discussions clear back in the spring of twenty twenty three. Um, and so, to get to this point is pretty exciting for the city of Sioux and the opportunity ahead. This project by Dairy LLC is gonna be leveraged for a number of grant projects through the E O P and C B G that are gonna leverage dollars for us to help build in Worthman Boulevard and the Water Main Project to help service their project. Uh, there's a number of other economic opportunities. Uh, it is contingent upon TIF, which is kind of standard operating procedure for most of our rail campus developments, uh, very similar to Pet Source. Um, and so we'll follow up, but we have meetings scheduled throughout June to kind of finalize the full package, uh, and that will most likely end with an M O U that we'll present to you probably at your next meeting, that will kind of finalize all the details and the ramp up of this project. But, uh, we're excited to get to this point, I know we have the, uh, the, uh, the project team here with us and the owners, and so, Mary, do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, I just wanna kind of echo what Greg said, we're very excited to welcome the whole family and to, to Sioux, and this is, uh, you know, not only a big deal for their family and their milk, um, their milking operation and their processing, uh, operation, but it's a big deal for the city of Sioux, this will be our, our largest private, um, investment, uh, development project since, uh, Pet Source by Schuler. And so, um, you know, it's great to see that area continue to develop. You know, it, it meets a lot of our, our needs as a community as we wanna continue to grow, but grow in a smart way, in a strategic way, uh, by welcoming good partners to our community, so we're very excited. Um, but would you like to say something? If you'd want to? Welcome.
Thank you, um, thank you guys, um, my name's Todd Tolles, um, the owner of Tolles Dairy's and, uh, the owner of Dairy LLC, um, Dairy Processing. My son and I will be partners on it, um, my grandson's birthday is today, otherwise he probably would have been here. Uh, so grandson turned eight and, um, yeah, maybe, maybe he'll be another generation of dairy farmers, but, um, I am third generation and my son has followed in my footsteps and so it's exciting to work with him. Um, we got some great team members, Adam Burton, um, who's been the lead on this project, and he's got a tremendous amount of experience in this type of facility and asymptic milk processing. And so, um, he brings, um, thirty some years of expertise in, in these types of facilities, um, internationally, New Zealand, Australia, and here in the States. And so, we're, um, pretty excited, this, this facility will be, um, I think the only one of its kind with the ability to export to all different parts of the world. Um, so not only, not only will it affect, um, Nebraska, but we will, um, continue to add value and, and be able to impact, um, export. Um, so, I think Jim, uh, Governor Jim Pillen, um, he used to, I used to meet with him quite often. Um, he was a man of mine years ago, and we would meet like every other Friday, every third Friday, and he, he goes, Todd, we just gotta continue to figure out how to add value to Nebraska, you know, farm products. And he goes, as a livestock producer, we buy corn and soybeans and alfalfa and make it into pork and milk and beef, and, and then we continue to add that value. So, this is a great opportunity for us to add value to our milk that we're already producing. We've been working on this for quite some time. Um, initially, we went about it in a little bit different way, we thought we'd bring in some junior, um, investment JV, but, um, looking at the rates and some of the financing options on that, we said, let's put our heads down and, and milk these cows and make some money, do it ourselves. And so, um, Farm Credit Services of America, we've been, I've been with them for twenty four years now. Uh, believed in it as well, and they're, they're gonna be the senior partner on helping us finance this project. And so, um, it initially is designed to process one point eight, uh, million pounds of milk a day. It'll take us a couple of years to ramp up to that, but, uh, it's a lot of milk, and we have plans for the forward to also double, um, in size. It's something that the Nebraska Dairy, um, Association has worked on, the state's worked on, trying to recruit Dairy Processing here to Nebraska. We waited and waited and waited, wondering if processing would come, and so it did not, um, so we decided to bring it on ourselves, so. You got any questions, I'd be more happy to answer, but we're excited, um, the city, Sioux, Jonathan and Craig have been great to work with, and the rest of the team, um, our initial meeting, you had power company, gas company, electric company, everybody there, and you guys have just done a great job recruiting, so.
Which is a daunting task, obviously it's a big project with a lot of moving parts, and, um, we appreciate, you know, working with you and your team to try and, and make this, make it happen. And, uh, I think we can see the finish line from here, hopefully.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot of work to do. It is daunting, it is, uh, you know, um, it's a, uh, it's a different project than I've done in the past. Almost everything I've ever built, I've known exactly how I'm operated. Um, I know how to milk cows, I know how to feed cows, I know how to farm land. Uh, I've learned all kinds of construction, building dairies from, um, I've had the opportunity to build, um, seven greenfield sites. Not how many people get that opportunity in life, and, and I have, and I've done it in three different states and experienced lots of different council meetings and, and county meetings, and, um, this is the least populated one I think I've been to, so this is kind of exciting. You know, I've sat in front of auditoriums and, um, maybe it's because we don't have cows on this project, but it's, uh, it's pretty exciting to, uh, see the, you know, um, response and everybody, and, um, so, yeah, this project's one that I'm gonna rely heavily on experts in the field, um, team members like Adam to, to help bring this project, you know, to fruition and, and production and, um, but it's, uh, it is a, as it is, it is the future of dairy, we believe, you know, the way dairy processing in, in an asymptic package that's got a longer shelf life and the ability to not have to be refrigerated, um, with the continued use of electricity. Just, I mean, just imagine like, even to build this project, if we had to ensure that we have enough power to power the plant, you know? As we go forward, you know, I believe, you know, it's gonna be even that much more important for grocery stores not to have to refrigerate certain products that they don't have to, and that's where asymptically packaged milk is gonna be able to be in an ambient temperature, not spoil. COVID was a real eye-opener for us, um, we dumped millions and millions of gallons of milk here in this country because the supply chain, you know, it was just all screwed up. You had food service, tag products, that there was no food service, and then you had grocery stores that were one smaller package, and then you had milk that was, you know, everybody went back to like, hey, how did we feed our kids? Or how did I eat when I was growing up and I need a gallon of milk and cereal? You know, the shelves went empty on milk and cereal, and we had just idled all these bottling plants because milk consumption had been on a decline for the last fifteen, twenty years. And so we didn't have the capacity to process the milk, and the cheese plants weren't able to sell their food service type products. And so, we had this just dilemma that, you know, nowhere to go with milk, and we actually fed milk back to our cows, dumped it in lagoons. And it was, it was that time that it was like, what, you know, systems broke, like, we need to do something about it, and we need to create a product that is able to be, you know, shelf-stable, get to people in those types of events, um, natural disasters, you know, epidemics like that, that, um, it, it's just, I really believe we're going down the great, um, track on the products that we're gonna be producing in this plant, so. Any other questions? I probably rambled out a lot of it, I need to, but.
I would say I, I recently saw a meme that said, we didn't do it because it was easy, we did it because we thought it would be easy.
I don't even think it's gonna be easy. Um, I've, uh, I've, uh, built some things that people didn't think could be built and, um, done some things that a lot of people didn't really believe would happen, and, um, I've got great people surrounding me, some really amazing team members, and I think we've selected, you know, through our due diligence, you know, some great partners to build this plant, and, um, it's gonna be exciting to see the finish line, so, yeah.
Todd, could you introduce your team, somebody who, whoever?
Uh, this is Adam Burton.
Hi there.
And Brock has just joined us here, yeah, just last, this week. Um, so, we are, I think you guys all know Brock, but, um, so, it's, uh, that's, that's my team here today. Um, Adam, I don't know if you wanna say anything, can we get up here and talk?
Yeah.
They'll appreciate your access.
Yeah, maybe that one will understand me though.
So. Come on up, Adam, you're, you're gonna kind of be the. You can tell them more about this facility if you want.
So, I'm Adam Burton, um, I'm originally, uh, from New Zealand and grew up on a dairy farm in New Zealand, um, and then moved to Australia where I went to college, um, but from college, I went straight into the industry of U H T milk manufacturing, so ultraheating and, you know, long shelf life, so that's why I say I've been in this for thirty years. Um, I've had the, the fortune of working in Australia, New Zealand, Asia, and in Europe, and now I've been in the US for eleven years now. So, um, I've been around, um, seen a lot of, uh, seen a lot of technology, I've seen a lot of different processes, I've seen a lot of different ways of, of making or processing milk into, um, shelf-stable products, so, um, so I do have a little depth of experience there, and I've worked from everywhere, from the technical engineering and through into operations as well, so I've sort of covered all aspects of, of, of this type of processing. Um, I've had the good fortune of, um, being introduced to Todd about two years ago, and we kind of gelled, and, um, we went, we've been talking about doing this project and looking at all the avenues, and Todd and I went down to New Zealand. I took him down and we toured around some of the big Fonterra sites, a couple of the other big facilities that I was able to get us into. And we were coming home, and Todd said to me, we can do this, and I said, yeah, we can, we just get all the right people. And he goes, no, no, we're doing this, so it was like, I go, right, I, I said, you realize what we're trying to take on, right? And he said, yep, we've got this, so at that point in time, it was like heads down, and we're gonna make this really happen, so, um, so that's it. So, and we've surrounded ourselves with guys that I've worked with in the US, uh, we've got a guy that's from Ireland that's a top process engineer, we've got guys that have been in this, you know, structural design and architectural side of things that has been a core group that I've worked with and had experience with for many years, so I've kind of brought in my team, Todd's brought in guys that are close to him and, and the, and the, the milk world, so, um, collectively, we're all good friends, but we're all here for the right objective. And I do need to echo Todd's, um, thoughts as well, just in what he talked about, like, working with the team, Greg and Jonathan, has been fantastic right from the outset. And, um, you know, I'm not the easiest guy to work with, am I, Greg? But, no, but at the end of the day, I think, you know, we're all here for the right objective, and it is to create, you know, uh, a, a, a working facility that is world-class. And Todd said, you know, um, we're building this so that not only can we cater for the domestic market, but expand to the international market. This type of product, this technology and process will enable us to do that, and so, um, it puts a big footprint on what we're doing, and we're really excited about it. I'm super excited, um, I think I was trying to count back, this is like my eighth big build like this, so, um, and this one, I, I get more excited every one I build, and this one is probably, I guess that's gonna be the last one, but I'm not that old yet, and I know Todd, so it's gonna keep rolling. But, no, it is, it's, it's, it's a fantastic opportunity, we've got a great, you know, great relationship here, and, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the council?
Well, first of all, I'd say thank you, Adam, for the kind words, and it's been great to work with you. Me and, uh, Jonathan have met almost for, well, it might be a year now, every Monday in my office to discuss this project and where we're at, and try to continue to move things along, um, and I never thought I'd have to use any of my knowledge from playing high school rugby. And between you and our electrical engineer, I'm just like surprised that that became a topic, but it's been great. I also wanna echo, uh, thanks to Todd, um, kind of things in the background, but you remember that Janet Hughes introduced a bill on our behalf to try to secure funding for our wastewater plant. Um, as we know, this project's gonna be likely our largest wastewater user, uh, and, um, Todd was gracious enough uh, to help advocate on behalf of that and have some discussions, uh, with the governor and Senator Hughes to advocate on our behalf to help us recognizing, you know, with COVID going on, the increase in expenses and things like that. Um, also, the dairy lobby for the state was very instrumental in that and, and working on that. Wasn't successful, but we did secure, secure a nice funding system, uh, through the state with S R F that's gonna keep costs down for everybody involved in this, and so we're very thankful. But thank you to Todd for advocating on behalf of the city of Sioux and, and working on that. That's the kind of teamwork on this thing, we know it, it takes a village to get all these things together and try to put the best package forward to secure this kind of stuff, and so, um, that's much appreciated, and we're excited to move forward on it.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, thank you for your investment.
Yeah, we're excited for it, so thank you guys.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, item three A is consideration of the ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to Dairy Processing LLC. So that's the one to introduce the ordinance.
How long are just the ordinance?
An ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to Dairy Processing LLC to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. To provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance is entered by title and designated as ordinance number twenty twenty five dash thirteen, and the title is hereby approved.
Okay.
Nope, it's not an annex.
Okay. I need a motion to dispense with such a rule.
So moved, second.
A motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, to register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cotto, Taylor, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Dyson, Worgen, seven zero.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty five dash thirteen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number twenty twenty five dash thirteen be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cotto, Taylor, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Dyson, Worgen, seven zero.
Alright, and then item three B is consideration of a purchase agreement with Dairy Processing LLC, and this just requires a simple motion.
Move through.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cotto, Taylor, Tanya, Coltrum, Singleton, Dyson, Worgen, seven zero.
That wasn't too painful, was it? We really appreciate, um, all the work that's gone into this, Jonathan is also sitting behind you. I had to recognize Jonathan for all his hard work in facilitating this, it's like I said, there's a lot of moving parts and it can be sometimes overwhelming, and so it's important to have, uh, his organization and Jonathan specifically, uh, guiding, uh, projects like this through the process. So, thank you Jonathan and your organization, and thank you to the Tolles family and to Dairy Processing, we're very excited.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anything else?
No, no.
You can sure stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have something better to do, we'd understand. Um, next we have item four, consideration of an offer received on to, to purchase land within the commercial rail campus development area legally described as lot fourteen. Sioux Rail Campus P U D, second edition, city of Sioux, Sioux, Nebraska, uh, Sioux County, Nebraska. Correct?
Yes, this is an offer, uh, from Good Life Limited, I believe. We got a few corporate names we're working around, Sam, but, uh, doing business as the Parker Baby Company. Um, Sam's here, and so I'll let him do all the introduction on the business and stuff, but essentially, lot fourteen is the lot just to the west of Kellen's, uh, new seed one that we recently sold off and has been put into motion, and so, uh, we have Sam here. Heidner.
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 Yeah, it's a tough one.
Man, it is, I'm gonna get it right at some sudden, Sam.
Yeah, it's all right, don't worry.
So, but, uh, Sam's here and he can tell you all about Parker Baby Company and their plans, uh, and then we'll fill in the rest of the details.
Yeah, uh, Sam Heidner, uh, founder of Parker Baby, um, happy to be here. Uh, I actually, I'll try to keep a long story tolerable here, uh, met my wife at Concordia, graduated in two thousand and eleven. My wife is a Seward High School graduate and grew up in this community. We started Parker Baby when we had our twins, uh, ten years ago. And I have one of my daughters here with me today, not one of my twins, but. Uh, recognize the need for baby products, we design and manufacture and sell baby products, um, exclusively online. Diaper bags and bibs and diaper storage, nursery products. Um, we currently distribute using third-party warehousing, which, um, has gotten expensive. Uh, but more importantly, we've, uh, had an initiative recently to bring more roles internally. So one of the things we want to do is bring our warehousing distribution in-house so that we can not only save money, but our vision is to nurture and grow strong families. And we believe that one of the best ways we can do that is through our employees and our team, so. All roads kind of led it, we're living in Colorado currently, our team's all remote. But we just really felt, uh, pulled back to the Seward community for a lot of reasons. We just love the community, um, it's been very difficult to operate a business in the state of Colorado. It's getting more and more difficult and we just felt really welcomed here in this community. So, we started looking at distribution and warehousing options here in Seward. Still have a lot of friends and family here in the area, so that was certainly a pull too. And, uh, we're planning on building this warehouse to bring in, we currently have warehouses in LA, Dallas, Salt Lake that we're gonna all consolidate here in Seward. And, uh, the location is ideal, centrally located, we can reach ninety percent of the country by UPS ground in two days or less. So it's, it's really a great location for us. Uh, currently in the process of relocating my family of six here to the Seward community. So we're moving from Colorado to, uh, Seward this summer. My kids will be starting at St. John Lutheran in, um, the fall. And, uh, we're bringing a warehouse manager and his family of six also from the Colorado area. So those first two roles and then, um, initially warehousing roles, um, probably three or four people. But our plan is really to grow our in-person team here in Seward. I mentioned everyone has kind of been remote, uh, but we've kind of reached our ceiling on growth, uh, as we've grown over the last, uh, nine years. And so, we really want, we pride ourselves in just hiring the right people, hiring for culture fit first and aptitude second. And we can coach and train people up, so looking forward to just finding awesome people here in the community and coaching them up, training them up on all things e-commerce, which is not really something they teach in school, but something that is, uh, easy to learn for the right people. So, um, I want to thank you all, I want to thank Jonathan too, who, uh, I actually had a chance to know while I was at Concordia and good to reconnect with him through this project, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? What are you thinking about your questions and comments? Item four A is consideration of an ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to Good Life Limited DBA Parker Baby Company. And then item four B would be the consideration of a purchase agreement with Good Life Limited DBA Parker Baby Company. So then questions or comments from the council, otherwise as I introduce the ordinance.
I'll say the same thing, thank you for your investment. Appreciate you picking us up, um, on the ordinance.
Introduce the ordinance. An ordinance to direct the conveyance of real property to Good Life Limited DBA Parker Baby Company to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title that designated as ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen and the title is hereby approved. A motion to dispense with such a rule.
Some move, second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Some move, second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Now this is the last ordinance for this evening, it's only one firm motion to make the ordinance as part of the current record. Motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Now on to, onto item four B, consideration of a purchase agreement with Good Life Limited DBA Parker Baby Company.
I'll just add on this one real quick, um, you have to notice that the development of the rail campus has been with purpose. We only get one shot to select who our partners are out of the gate and then after that, what's sold is sold, what's gone is gone. Um, if you look back at Pet Source and Schuler, Nebraska-based company, uh, Lavander, Nebraska-based company. Our opportunities locally with Kellen Plum Creek Seed, um, now working with Todd and Dairy Processing. Again, another local, uh, Nebraska-based dairy for a Nebraska-based opportunity. And Sam is a great example of that. Initially, when I first heard about, we kind of heard about this one, it, it kind of seemed as a Colorado company looking for, you know, an opportunity. And then I got the opportunity to sit down with Kellen and Sam in my office and when I heard Sam's story, uh, and his connections back in Korea, his wife's connection back to the community growing up here, um, these are the opportunities and, and the selectiveness that we have. Again, we're open to everybody, Seward's open for business, but there says something about having that connectivity back to people that believe in Seward and believe in Nebraska, it's important. Uh, and I think Sam's, uh, company is really a great example of that, of sending people out of the world from Concordia or Seward and then having them come back as success stories to help, uh, you know, grow Seward. And so, thank you Sam for your investment in Seward and this opportunity. Uh, and I was glad to, to make that connection with Sam in my office and get to hear his story, uh, and what his hopes and aspirations are for their company, so. Again, remember this is all purposeful and, and a lot of that is, is the work that you guys do and the mayor does and definitely that Jonathan does. This is not, um, fly-by-night work, uh, it is very, um, purposeful and so we're excited. Uh, and, and Todd didn't mention it, but Todd also has, I think, a daughter that attends Concordia as well. There's just all these random connections back to this community, even with the biggest projects you can imagine. And so, that really is quite an amazing opportunity for us to have those sorts of connections rather than just international conglomerates that don't care anything about us, uh, you know, setting down shop for a little while and then bailing, so, awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, item B is the consideration of the purchase agreement. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Move, move, all right, you can do that one. Uh, move for approval and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Thank you and welcome, welcome back.
Appreciate it.
Item number five, consideration of a resolution directing the conveyance of real property legally described as all the adjacent vacated alley running north and south along the west line, lots two and three, block thirty-eight, Cloyde's Edition, city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, that sounds made up. Correct.
All right, this is the big economic development one, this one's really super exciting, this is basically quick claim to eating an alley that is paved over and gonna remain pavement forever right next to Fast Mart and the childcare center across the street. So, um, we could have retained this as an alley, but Fast Mart said that they were willing, as part of their parking project, to disconcrete over all of it and they will leave it open as a great pedestrian way, really, that's what it's predominantly used for with people that visit the Civic Center and they come over to get drinks and snacks at Fast Mart. And so, we're happy to not have to worry about maintaining or do anything else and so that's what we're doing here.
Any questions or comments from the council? I'm asking you to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce it.
All right. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Some move, second.
A motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item six, consideration of an amendment number five to the Engineering Services Agreement with the Shimmer Associates Incorporated for the Workman Boulevard Water Main Projects Phase Two and Three, in the amount of fifty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety cents. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, thank you very much. So this is the, um, next phase of the water main project, uh, the rail campus completes, this will complete the loop. Uh, so, uh, the next item on our agenda is awarding the, or signing the contract we've already awarded for the construction of phase two, phase one is operational to Plum Creek Seed already. This is probably the most, uh, complex because it involves borrowing under both Walker Road and, um, BNSF. So will require, uh, uh, a process with BNSF of a monthly payment, uh, for use of their, uh, of their property for crossing utilities, uh, as we do in other, other locations. Um, and so we will tie into a fourteen-inch water main that runs from the water plant up near the dock factor, two hundred and ninety-fourth street, uh, along the BNSF tracks on the north side, wraps around Tenneco and then comes into the city. And so this will tie in, uh, essentially the northwest corner of the, of the dairy property. That's going to be, uh, there's additional items, um, included in this. So for bo, all three phases, the permit fees, rather than the city going through the exercise of issuing checks to pay those, we had Shimmer pay those directly, we're compensating them for those, uh, permit fees. We're also creating, um, an annex map, so we're annexing the remainder of the portion of the rail campus into the city limits. And we need a, um, not just a map, but also a, uh, meets and bounds description of that area. So we have a, it's a unique area, kind of, uh, cuts across other boundaries that we've done in terms of the rail campus, uh, PUD, uh, development. Uh, so with that, I request council approval of this amendment in the amount of fifty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety cents.
Move through.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Streisand Morgan seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item seven, consideration to approve a construction contract in the amount of five hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and ninety cents. And issue a notice to proceed to Verba Construction for the Workman Boulevard Water Main Phase Two project. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you. Uh, so on the last council meeting on May twentieth, we, uh, issued a notice of ward through the city council, uh, to Verba Construction of Skylar, uh, for construction of that phase two water main. Uh, in the interim, two weeks, they have prepared the third portion of the contract, signed it, it's ready for mayor's signature. They submitted a performance bond and a payment bond, it's essentially a certi guaranteeing that, um, the work will be completed. Um, and definitely the, uh, ensures that the owner gets the value of the contract. And now our next step is to approve, mayor to sign that co, that, uh, contract with Verba Construction, issue a notice to proceed and that's what I asked for council approval tonight.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, is any further, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francisco Taylor Tanyas Coltriman Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
All right, thank you. Um, item number eight, consideration of a recommendation to award Emmy Collins Contracting Company Incorporated for the Workman Boulevard Extension Project in the amount of one million eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred eleven dollars, sorry. One, we'll try one more time, one million eight hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Mike, it's a big number.
It is a big number, uh, but our engineer's estimate was two point four million and so we had, uh, seven bidders. We had nine bidders on the associated water main project, uh, which we just discussed. This is, uh, the third project in, uh, parallel, including the, the dairy development as well. That all have to, uh, essentially work in unison as, as the work is, uh, completed. Um, so with, uh, the, uh, seven bidders, the bid data on April twenty-ninth, um, I did produce a memo that was in your packet here, listing them in, uh, order. And, uh, we evaluated the, uh, the low two bidders, uh, we started that evaluation I made first. We received information from both bidders and after that, uh, evaluation process, uh, we are recommending award to Emmy Collins in that amount, the mayor said one million eight hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Thank you, Mike, doing anything great?
Yep, I'll note, I'll note, uh, that this is not the low bid, as you can see by the information provided by Mike in the, uh, memo that was provided. The low bid came from NLC, LLC, uh, at one million seven hundred ninety thousand nine hundred and fifteen. As part of the process to evaluate bids in pursuant to the information that was provided to bidders in the contract bid documents, we evaluate bids, knowing that this project is very time-sensitive and it's an extremely large project for us with CDBG grant funding, EOP, state funding, and the timeliness of the project we just talked about with dairy processing coming online and a hundred and eighty-five million dollar investment, we needed to guarantee and vet all of the bidders because we can't miss the mark on this project. And so as Mike noted, they undertook that process, both Mike and Shimmer, which is our design engineers on this, requested information from the two low bidders, we also did this in the water main project as well, uh, as we vetted that project. Through that process, um, concerns of the low bid came up, we did subsequent requests for information. Some of that was received in a timely manner, some of it wasn't and some of it we had concern about. Uh, I believe we do have people from NLC here with us tonight that can talk about their bid. Um, but it was the recommendation of the engineering team and in review of that to recommend Emmy Collins to make sure that we ensure this project gets completed in, in the time we need with the experience that we need. We can go into detail if you'd like, Kelly will probably have recommendations about what we're gonna do and can say and won't say, but, um, there is an expe, extensive amount of work done to try and verify that this was right. It is, as you know, it's not normal for us to not recommend the low bid, but we have done it and we've done it within the last year under very similar circumstances and that was, we needed to ensure that the bid that we accepted on the water main or the storm sewer projects, the major storm sewer projects on Bradford and Park, uh, and Roberts, right? What was our other one?
Uh, Bradford and Park.
Bradford and Park, with their tie-ins and the timeframe for doing the re, full reconstruction of the highway, we had very certain marks. Uh, and so we had to do a vetting process, which is the exact same vetting process we undertook here. And in that one as well, we did not recommend, as you, as you remember, the low bid on that project either. So, uh, we feel like we've done our due diligence in regards to this process and how we undertook it. Uh, gave ample opportunity for response and rebuttal. Um, but ultimately, the recommendation by Mike and working with Shimmer is the one that you have before you. So, we can answer any questions, uh, I think we'll have some people that like to speak and so we can kind of work our way through this and see where we can go.
So initially, any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, did you wish to speak tonight?
Uh, yes, I'd like to.
There's a, when you're, don't you do it before, but when you're finished, I think you have a card up there to fill out.
Okay.
So we have your contact information.
Um, yeah, I guess I'd just like to get in front of you guys to, I guess, kind of get some feedback from the council members and whoever else about, uh, your thought process and, and going with the lower bidder versus somebody else. I mean, it's sixty-five thousand dollars, um, we've done several projects, paving projects.
Greg, can you introduce yourself, sorry?
I'm sorry, Greg with NLC, um, this is my wife, Nancy, with NLC. Um, I just want to get in front of you and see if there, if there's a comfort level that we can come to here with us doing this project. And we've done extensive paving projects, um, throughout Nebraska and we give the references, I think you checked our references and they checked out as far as the paving portion of it. We got good recommendations from everybody that we did work for.
We can go into the, and I'm, I'm, Greg, I'm gonna defer to my counsel on this one, but we. But we can go through more detail of the vetting process and what we found. I just want to make sure that we're okay with that, so it's up to you, Kelly.
It's fine.
Okay. So the recommendation was, is I think, and Mike can speak to the more of the specifics, so if we request, we request, I believe, the last five years of relevant work. And then the actual references, whether that's, uh, a project contact with, whatever your contact was, whether you did for a city, so maybe it was a engineering contact there, or an oversight engineering firm. And so Greg and N L C provide us that information, uh, for five projects. One of the things of note was the five projects that were provided in the last five years. I think the max project was about a million dollars, correct?
One, one point four million dollars.
Okay.
We did for the simulating.
And so this project is larger, obviously. But the concrete work that they've done, uh, verified once we got the last one in, uh, which was from Tim Gergen, we felt confident on, at least on the concrete side, that that was sufficient. One thing that was of note to us was there was no waste, this includes wastewater and stormwater. There was no wastewater work at all in any of those five projects. There was some stormwater work, so not huge, but not insignificant as well. So we felt okay with that. Thus, our follow-up was, not only did we want additional information, but we asked about references specifically for subcontractors and their names, which this is noted in the information and request of bidders. And so we requested the names, we received the names of the subcontractors, one of which on the wastewater and stormwater side, we were unfamiliar with. And so we requested reference documents, because we knew they had never done any specific work on, I believe, on these projects that were referenced. And then we would need reference work for wastewater because N L C has not done any wastewater work in their recommended projects. And so we said, please provide that back to us. Uh, we, I think Mike gave a week timeframe for that. And, and the ultimate response we got back didn't have that information in it. We can get on all the details of it, but that was really what we needed to go do the evaluative process to follow up with the engineering firms or municipalities or political subdivisions or whatever it may be, um, to do that work. So then, uh, Greg reached out to me, I made contact and, and spoke with Greg and said, all right, give me the information, here's what we're looking for. And I, and I filled in these concerns, like, hey, your projects have not been significantly as large as this one. This will be the largest one in the last five years. You have no wastewater and your sub, we don't have any reference for, we're not familiar with that sub working on, um, any wastewater stuff. We can't even, I don't think we could find them. Is that correct, Mike?
Correct.
In like a search? And so we requested that information. Greg and I had kind of a discussion back and forth on, well, could we, can I provide that? Am I still gonna get it? Can I have somebody else do it? And so I gave some extra time to get that information to us, which would have been last week.